Twenty minutes at the table, you know, whatever it takes to have you feel comfortable with our board conversation. And then we're going to do a full share out at your table. So please take notes about your conversation. Find someone at your table who's comfortable sharing out because at that point I'm going to be typing it onto the screen, maybe on your computer.
Yep.
And Barb's going to be taking notes in case I miss something. So, thank you again for being here, really appreciate it.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming to our community forum. The plan of this is, as I'm finishing all the things that are, have to be done for the budget, I'm looking for some input and for comfort level from you, the Eden population. So here's our agenda. We're going to talk about our district objectives, some of the uncertainties in the budget process, some of the obstacles we've overcome and we're overcoming, some good news, then the group conversations that Sandy talked about, and then group sharing. So we're going to start our conversation with programming. We are going, the goal is to maintain and enhance programming pre-K through 12. The goal is no staff reductions. The goal is a teacher increase of 4.69 FTEs. Yes, I did say increase. Programs for all students, pre-K through 12. Class sizes, making the classes so that students have the best learning environment possible. And initiatives and staffing. So our first concern in these days is safety and security. So, we're looking for a school resource officer, an SRO, and that would be an increase of one FTE for our district.
So if I could just put a little detail behind that. So, Missy Hartman, our town supervisor, approached me last week about a sharing, a partnering opportunity between the town and the school. Of course, our budget cycles are very different. Our budget cycle is now basically July 1 through June. Their budget cycle runs more like the calendar year. But so, our hope is just to do a partnering with the town on a school resource officer who would be housed in this building but would have pre-K 12 responsibilities. Educating students, getting into the classroom, having kids at other grade levels get to know who they are, a varied schedule, so the routine's not quite known. And I've had a resource officer in one district, I've had school liaisons now in three districts, and we're excited about this opportunity.
And then we want to institute some mental health training initiatives for staff and students. And then school monitors at the middle school, senior high.
So let me put some detail behind that. When the school monitors at the middle school and the high school is a promise. I get accused of using that word more often than I actually use it, but this is a promise to our parents and to our staff that we would be able to help our students get to their classes, our younger students, sixth grade mainly, but all of our students, but mainly them, get to their classes on time. And these would be here until, I'm going to say 4:00, 4:30-ish, until that bus leaves. So that after-school supervision which has been lacking for us, we're attempting to diminish and then also especially during the lunch periods.
And then we're talking about the bus cameras, which we've started to put in, and we're going to look to add a few more to the buses. And GPS system. And the GPS system that we're planning on putting in place for September 1st will allow parents to track their school bus with their student on it. So they can tell if the student actually missed the bus or if the bus is delayed because it's sitting slower, waiting for other students to get on at their homes that are usually outside. So, again, under our security, bus cameras and GPS. We're going to have secure front entrances, and at the middle high school, we're going to have a greeter/attendance clerk, which is an increase of one FTE. And our groundskeeper, who we're hiring this year, will be increased to a full FTE for next year. That will be because he's here for the full year. He will be starting as a full-time employee, but he wasn't here the full year. So that position will help to look for things that could be wrong with the fields, that is to help the students in safety when they go out for sports or whatever. And he would also notice if there was something amiss on our properties that shouldn't be there. So then we're going to have building, digital security, and phone systems as part of next year's initiative.
Do I have a question? Can I ask something?
Sure.
Okay. For the shared, um, school resource officer, would he be responsible for benefits if we're sharing them?
We're just in the discovery phases, so that would be something that would be part of those discussions with the town.
Does that would impact the cost of that?
Our hope is, but their budget cycle runs different than ours, and the town doesn't vote until November.
Okay.
Is there anything from the state level?
Yeah, so if you take a look at that new safety package that came out that was passed by the senate yesterday, it's an incredibly comprehensive package that we love. We absolutely love it. So, so we're hoping, I mean, if you take a look at some school districts around, like North Collins and Springville has shared for a number of years now, a school resource officer that's paid for by bullet aid, I guess, through New York State. I'm not sure on the bullet aid, but that's my guess. There are other districts where they have the Senate nations that help out, some that pay for it. Some sharing or partnering between the town, but they're all different. Some that partner with the town, the school pays for it all, some of it, the town pays for the benefits, the school pays for the salary. So I love what Laura just said in terms of discovery. We just met again, Laura and I did with Missy this morning, and it would be presumptuous for me to say anything other than that. Clearly, anything that the town does is helpful to us so that we can do something academic, right?
So, we have some obs, uncertainties. We were given information last year that our Title Grants may lose some funding. Last year, we lost about 12% funding in our Title 2A, which is for professional development and class size reduction. Title 1 is our reading initiative to help students in reading and math so that they can achieve at higher levels. The uncertainty we always have, what is our enrollment actually going to be on September 1st? And it's not, you could say, well, we only got, we got 12 new students, we don't need another teacher because we have 12 grade levels. It's the cohort those 12 students land in. So they could all be at first grade, and that would create an overflow in the first grade classrooms, or it could be all at the senior high level at 11th grade and create a problem. So it's really those increases and decreases at the cohort.
Or they don't register kindergarteners until September 1st, right? We know that. Although, we did get good news today. I always tell people when they move into Eden to have lots of children, is a family moving in with seven children. So, two singles, a double, and a triplet, so pretty exciting.
And then, we have expiring contracts for three of our bargaining units. They all expire on June 30th, so that's an uncertainty. And then, our state aid is always an uncertainty at this time of year because it's pending final legislative approval, and that comes with the budget which is due April 1st. And we're hopeful that they will have an on-time budget again this year. So, we had some obstacles that were dropped in our lap on the way through the budget process, and we didn't know about them when we projected a rollover budget. We have been blessed with health insurance increases, double-digit. Employee retirement system has a rate increase. The teachers' retirement system has a rate increase. The property tax cap calculation, which we don't get all the moving pieces for until mid-February. So, the Consumer Price Index is their inflation number that they give us. That says 2.13. But the maximum we can use in the calculation is 2%, so we're already behind the eight ball. And then when we did the complex calculation, we only have a .46% increase available to us as a school district. So, those were all things we had an inkling of, but no finite detail at the beginning of the budget process. Now we have some good news, and I like good news. Graduation rates, the fourth highest in Western New York at 97%.
Thank you, Hamburg Sun, for that article on the front page.
Increase graduation rates for our students that are at risk. Academic enrichment offerings are expanding. After-school programs are still going on for our students. Academic support programs for those who need it. AEP, ELA, and math clubs. We have one-to-one technology initiative, K through 8. And we still have smart schools bond money that will help us with other technology innovations in our district. We have more good news. We can maximize facility use. The new fitness center should be ready to open next school year. Town recreation continues to use our buildings, boys and girls clubs for our students. Raiders morning program at the Eden Elementary, that continues. Our continuing education program to have some offerings for the community. And our athletic programs, Little Loop, Hamburg Swim, all of those programs are all good news for our district. Wow, more. We have Senator Patrick Galvin, a godson for this district with his bullet aid, supports egg in the classroom. Staffing increases for the middle school, high school technology. And community gardening grades, K through 8. Farm School Grant we received in 1718. New York State Kids to Parks Program, that pays for the field trips for the younger students. We have a fitness award via Independent Health that was secured at the GLP. And the best news that we have in all of these grants is, we have staff that continues to go out, look for grants, and find ways to help do more for our students.
So, where we've been really lucky, honestly, if you walk the elementary school on almost any day, you'll see kids cutting out the box tops, which is always really nice. The second piece is a lot of flexible furniture in classrooms that I've seen at the elementary school and GLP that are all individually driven by teachers, the furniture.
I have a question.
Yes.
And this was asked at our department chair last week. Jeff was going to check, and I did not have the chance to talk with Sean, but it opens up a bigger question. Is there something that we're doing as a community not well enough to help the state aid come through? What I mean is, are there forms that parents in this district are negligent in filling out? Either selectively, personally?
Let me expand on that just a moment, because nothing is ever just one thing, so it's more systemic than that. So, we've been able to raise our free and reduced lunch rate formally in the past five years from 19% to 25%. We personally believe it's higher. I believe that Eden has a larger percentage of what we consider the working poor. So these are, these are parents who are working double jobs, working double shifts, probably not home, and so they may or may not qualify. We also have very proud people in Eden who won't fill out the forms. We've done our best, Sean's department has done her best to get people to fill them out. There was a point a couple of years back where we felt that we could get close to a half a million dollars or more in aid every year if in fact everyone in the district who qualified for free and reduced lunch filled out the forms. 33% is a very magic number to be able to qualify for a lot of grants that we don't get. That's one thing. The second one is that we are considered an affluent community. So it may not be that the average person in Eden is affluent. I actually believe that the average person in Eden is probably mid to lower middle-class. But we have a number of families in Eden that are affluent, and that skews our rankings through the state of New York. Laura can put a little bit of more detail to that.
A lot of our state aid formulas have what they call the combined wealth ratio. That combines based off of people's income tax. So you know where on your state income tax, it asks for your school district code.
Yeah.
If people don't put that on there, we're not properly accounting for their income.
Are people aware of that? Do people understand in this community, the money that is lost to not only their child, but every child in this district? And the financial burden that that puts, or could offset this community?
I would have to believe that anyone who's going to a paid tax preparer, just from my prior life, is getting told that you have to put it on. And I believe most of these electronic programs, it's a default. If you don't put it on, it's not going to let you move forward. But your combined wealth ratio is not only the wealth of your paycheck, it's the wealth of your property. So when you have huge homes, or you have huge tracts of land that are highly valued, that adds to the combined wealth ratio for the district. Those are all out of our control. I'll give a good example. In my last district, I worked for Perry Schools, and we had Silver Lake was part of our school district.
Yep.
And because the assessments and such are behind, they're two to three years behind what's going on, where other areas were losing property value, we became wealthier and wealthier looking to the state because our values didn't drop because of that lake. And when I called to ask state aid, what can I do? They're like, I'm going to guess right off the bat, you have a lake in your district. So it's things that are totally out of our control, too. So it's not all things that people can do.
So, and then in addition to that, we have a decent amount of tax exempt for various reasons. Property in Eden, agricultural mostly. When we were trying to push the flyer out last year, Kathy Dobson and I were just amazed at the amount of properties of people who don't live on the properties, right? Because they're tax exempt, or farming, certainly. The other one is it's a really low tax base. Is that the way that you would describe it? We don't have retail. That means that our residents, our private homes are paying for it. We don't have a lot of manufacturing, so our homes are paying for it. And then, we have less people. So that means the pie is, Tom used to say it all the time, the pie doesn't change its size, there's fewer people paying the same amount or more. Those are all the reasons, and you might have another few, Laura, that I see what we see.
I am familiar with almost everything that you said, with the exception, again, where it goes back to my question, is if there is money available for this school district, if there is money available for each child, and we are not tapping into that money, and people aren't aware that the financial loss to the district, or just simply filling out the form, applying for free and reduced lunch.
So maybe at your table, when you guys are talking, you can brainstorm some new ideas.
And I will tell you, there is one thing that comes, and it was one of the first things I did when I arrived at Eden. Every year, the state looks, and if they think that you put the wrong school district on your tax form, they send it to the district that you put. So, there's a reconciliation that goes on. It probably takes a good three, four days to get through everything to make sure it's reconciled. I do that every year.
We reconcile Medicaid for Sean.
So...
Right, we reconcile the Medicaid. Yep.
You should reconcile Medicaid.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. So, I mean, we're doing the things that we can, but it's always good, the hugest thing that I believe people can do is write to their elected officials. That's the hugest thing you can do. And you can say that, you know, this isn't working for us.
The problem with it also is that we can't, to a certain extent, ask these people to fill out, the board members, I've talked to Sean many times, about how we can increase this, if we could ask them at IEP meetings or when they come in the building. But unfortunately, some of the state regulations does not allow us to encourage these people strongly to do it.
It's actually the opposite problem I've had in the two other districts that I've worked in, Grand Island and Williamsville, where people who shouldn't fill them out did, and you can't necessarily check them. Right?
I think Hamburg is doing a kind of a push via every form of media that you're pushing people to fill these out.
Yep. So we welcome your ideas at your table.
Okay.
Thank you for the question.
So we're going to continue on with our state aid. We get expense-driven aids, and those were the majority of our raise in state aid from the governor's proposal. What is an expense-driven aid? It's transportation, it's BOCs, it's books, it's our high costs, students through the special ed program. And we have to spend the money in 1718 to get reimbursed in 1819. So it's not any money that is available to create new initiatives with, or to bring back lost programs. So it's problematic. It's just a reimbursement module. Foundation aid increases, on the other hand, are money that the district can use for new initiatives. We got $133,000 in new money under the governor's proposal. The other thing that we're hopeful for is, historically, the legislative budget has always provided more educational funding. And the last four or five years at least, we have had on-time budgets, and so by April 1st, we should have a really good idea of what the final number is for our state aid. So those are all good news pieces. State aid reality. They do not cover the program initiatives, because $133,000 is not much new money. And if you look at our amounts, we only get 38%, 39% of our total revenue dollars from state aid. The rest comes from property taxes, local initiatives, and then the reserves and fund balance that have been set aside for this district.
So a big push through to, from school districts, from associations, is to go back to the time when state aid was at 50%. And we go back up, and we can take a look at those charts and see that when state aid for districts was at 50%, school districts were in good shape. So that's a really big push right now for us with our legislators.
And now it's time for our group sessions.
So, what would be great is just, you can break up your tables, you can leave them at your tables, however you all decide that you can have a good conversation. If there's, and you have what Laura talked about, if there's specific things that you'd like to see in the budget and you don't see them there, talk about it, write it down, we'll share them out. If there's things in there that you're like, why is this here? This isn't something that we need to look at at all. Let's have some conversation about that, too. And make sure that you're able to leave here tonight without questions and without concerns. We're certainly always going to have concerns because there's things we want to fund that we can't, but we're certainly doing our best, and we're ecstatic that we're sitting here tonight saying no staffing cuts. Ecstatic, okay? So, thank you. Let's take...
I just have a real quick question.
Yeah, sure, Paul.
You know, back about, I don't know, maybe five years ago, because of that debacle with our Albany budget, we were, I want to use the word austerity that I, we, we, this tax cap came into effect. And some districts are able to like get that money back that they had lost. Remember Tom, what we talked about, that the state owes us money?
Mm-hmm.
So, at what point, I mean, where do we stand then even trying to get that money back, that because we've been adhering to this tax gap?
Are you talking the tax cap or the gap elimination adjustment?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm misvoked. The gap elimination.
It's a great question.
The gap, it is. And the gap elimination adjustment, districts across the state lost millions. And I'm certain, I don't know the exact number for Eden because I haven't had time to research it.
Seven million.
There at this time is little to no hope of districts being able to recoup that.
So we were paid off on our...
Many districts recouped it.
No. So, we had the number of years, but we had gap elimination money back. What we got last year was the end of it.
Which means that they no longer are reducing our revenue to fit their pocketbook.
Right. But there is no more of that coming in. And so while we feel that we were owed it, they actually owed us more than that to begin with. But it puts us behind to begin with, right? So if you're expecting money every year, we had $500,000 one year, which is how we started our initiatives with one-on-one. So we're behind this year just because there is none coming in from anywhere. In terms of state aid or any of the other monies that we've lost, I wouldn't be expecting any of that either. Okay? Good question. So let's take 15 minutes, okay? Please have some great conversation. Laura and I will walk around. Administrators are there to put some detail behind, if you don't have an administrator at your table, you need one or two, because they will put detail behind those FTEs for you. So when we're talking about four FTEs and teachers, you're going to probably want to know what that means. So we'll come back at 7 o'clock. You guys did a great job, thank you. Do you like this format?
Yeah.
Good. I heard somebody say yes. Can you, is that font big enough? I don't have them. Ellen, can you get control of the room for me, please? Did you do like hands up, Ellen? What did you do? Thank you, Ellen. Is the font large enough for you?
No.
Okay. So, I'd like to pick a table. We'll start with this table right here to just share out your most important points, and I'm going to type them in while you speak. So, you'll know when to go on to the second one after I finish typing the first one, okay? It's not test. Go ahead.
Our most important point is we feel that going out at 2%, I think all of us felt this way, maybe I'm not. Okay. Is, is not enough. That we need to go at 2.2. Because when you write in an article, you're going to have a whole paragraph, and what people are going to see is that we're going to go, two things, three things are going to happen. They're going to see that Eden District is going to go above the cap and look for a supermajority. Now people automatically are going to think, holy cow, we're going at 4%, we're going to go at 6% like we used to already last year. No. We're going to go to .2% above 2%. Now, you and I know that that's a little bit more than .2%. But for the general public, they're not going to read the rest of the article, they're going to see that, and they're going to say, oh, they're only going 2.2% above? So then, you put it in layman's terms, what does that actually mean per 100,000 or per And I think you also have to include a very smart article that in order for this district to survive, survive, I mean, that seems like a very strong word. Because we have, we have not gone at the 2% in a couple of years, and that's crushed us. Because it's like, you know, here's the table that I'm starting at, and I'm always below the table. So that's where the district, excuse me, the state starts, and I'm starting to be right below the table all the time. We've got to get above the table, we've got to start building on for the next year, the next year, the next year. That was my argument last year. I know it was the wrong thing because we had a lot of things going on, and maybe was too much. But this year, I mean, in order to get to the 2%, is what, .43? Is that what we're saying?
.46 or .43.
.46.
So, let's add another .26. Because the general person who's going to look at this is only going to see that 2.2. They don't understand that when you go to 2%, you're actually increasing, and you might even go over a supermajority. The other point that we had, Larry had the good one, is that in our district, in our town, we have four...
244 NICE numbers.
244 NICE numbers. How many people on average vote?
Less than 500.
Less than 500. You get all of those people, plus their grandparents, plus their children who are 18, those are people that we can actually lobby and say, you need to go out, you need to vote with us. Those are people you can have a really, really hard-fought conversation with. That's your 60%.
Okay. What else did you guys talk about?
Have we got it?
Did you have counterpoints to that, too?
Well, I think the concern was, if it goes down, where do we go? Do we go to 2% or do we have to go back down to the...
So I can answer that for you, but Laura can do a better job, someone will let her.
So, what happens is, if you're voted on the first time, you go out the third Tuesday in June and you vote again. And you can indeed go out and do the .46. And then if you're voted out again, you go to a contingency budget. A contingency budget doesn't sound bad. You keep everything the same in your levy as you did last year. Except for, there is no building use without 100% reimbursement from whoever is using it. Doesn't matter if it's town wreck, it doesn't matter if it's anyone who's not associated with the school. with the school. An active school program has to pay to use the facilities. And they have to pay for everything, including any staffing, any cleaning, any utilities, the whole nine yards. It makes it very difficult.
If I thought that .46 went down...
So...
Well, then you're going to see the apathy turn around, then all of a sudden you're going to see 70% if you look it up.
So...
They're going to realize, whoa.
.46 to us is worth 66,000. That's not a first-year teacher's benefits and salary. I would tell you that on a general vote, we have these statistics, so we could certainly publicize them. Our general success rate is 62 to 63%. And we've gone out at .2, .9, point whatever. So our school district tends to go out at about 62, 63 in general.
Oh, that's different than we were told.
Yeah.
No, it's 52.
No, last year, we went, last year we garnered 50-some, but we went out at 4%.
That's a big difference. See, I think people are still hung up on last year. There was a lot of contention. I was here, you all witnessed this. There was a lot of contention going on with issues with specific teachers, this whole project going on. A lot of people were pulled in different directions, a lot of people were pulling people a lot of directions. I did not see that happen much today.
So to put some background to this, I would tell you, at .46, we're garnering 66,000 extra dollars out of our levy. If the, if we go at 2%, we're still not, we're still not at 3% increase, which is generally what a cost of increase is. If in fact, we don't get the .46 and we go contingency, we will cut. So while I told John from Hamburg Sun that I am absolutely thrilled to bring to the community no staff cuts on the table this year, if we go contingency, we will have to. We will have to. Okay? What else? Anything else? Okay. One second, guys.
Well, I was thinking, Robert, in regards to last year's vote, most sports teams were away that day of the vote because the fields were all poor out in the area. So I know lacrosse was an act of in, and I guarantee you, most of those parents probably did not get a chance to vote. So I'll change my schedule.
So Marissa, Marissa has her, she has her marching orders.
Did you get the president's marching orders last year? I would suggest this, that you have a kids' day. That you have a kids' day at your sporting event.
What's a kids' day?
Well, you invite, like we have in volleyball, we bring dumb kids', sisters' and brothers' programs up to get out and play with the varsity before the match or after the match a little bit.
Big brother, big sister.
Big brother, big sister. We do it the same day.
Because then the parents come?
Parents come, they're here, they're on campus, kids are grabbing a tents racket, kids are running on the track.
So they can eat the food that's in the food trucks?
Sure, sure.
There will be no food trucks. Just concession stands.
Oh, sorry, Jack said concession stands. Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
And you publicize that, so grandma and grandpa are here with their iPhones, which they've learned how to use.
I do like that.
Yeah.
They just have to come up that far. Maybe you can, maybe you can do some deliveries down toward the doors.
I think, I think the more people we have on campus, the better opportunity it is to get those caring, involved parents.
Grandparents.
To vote.
Aunts, uncles.
So I want everybody to remember is that we cannot tell people how to vote. Our point is to get more people here to vote, okay?
But individual groups can suggest to people.
Yes, so unions can, boosters can, PTA can.
But again, think, think about all those third and fourth graders on that turf field with a lacrosse stick in their hand, with a baton running around the track. That is a lot of people on campus.
That's your kids' day?
Yeah.
Do you want to organize it?
I'll talk to Marissa about it.
Excellent. Thank you, Robert. Who's Amy?
Order.
Okay.
And we turn the lights on to, how long do we vote until 9?
We vote until 10.
On the ordinance? The ordinance is 10?
Votes till 9.
Votes till 9.
The votes till 9. Okay, what else you got?
Vote us.
Sure.
We also had a conversation about going over the tents cap and just, you know, Doc was talking about what we missed out, you know, compounding all the finances from the previous years that we missed out on. Because not only did we not go over, we were under what we could have done.
You've been under since I got here in 2013.
Right. Um, you were also, do you want all of our points?
Whatever you want to share.
Okay. So I think we all see the financial issues that this district is facing. I can push my app and see point again, so move on, but there was some discussion on safety.
Okay. Can you elaborate on that?
I'm excited about the possibility of an SRO.
Okay.
There was a mention of teachers.
Go ahead. Of what?
Of teachers carrying guns. There was a forum, and I think it was my concern as a teacher, not here to...
So I want to clarify anything that's been up on Facebook. In New York State, the only people who can carry on school grounds are police officers. Retired police officers cannot carry, security guards cannot carry, peace officers cannot carry. These are New York State laws. What the legislation is talking about in, at the federal level, and I don't know at the state level in detail, is whether they want to change that from federal levels. That doesn't mean the state would have to follow that. And then beyond that legislation would become individual school districts and unions who would have to see how they feel about it. So it's not, so whatever's been stated on social media that I get to choose is completely wrong. Okay, I don't get to say that Cheryl can carry. Okay? Okay, go ahead. What else?
Um, we talked about the previous launch applications, way to reach parents.
Did you come up with some ideas?
Yeah, the possibility Doc mentioned, using the parent portal, is there any way to link the application?
To try to eliminate the bribe.
Possibly link the application like right, so it goes right to the state, so there's no like middleman. The parents don't have to worry about it.
But can I tell you what we have done, maybe that will help? Last year, we spent a lot of money and sent one to every single household in the district. Yeah, absolutely, for return. We get automatically linked to us any student that is pre other SSI benefits. We should get all that now, the state finally did that. So they're downloading into our system, portal leagues. Before, we had to kind of track them down who was free. So we sent it out to every single one. We have it on our link. As we had, most of the people that just fill it out, we're not eligible. Those are the ones we get back. We have gone door to door. My social worker, myself, I have, I have talked to, if anybody knows me, they know, I have no problem talking to parents. Meaning this dump, but they don't want it, can't do anything about it. That's the tricky part.
Can we ever fill out a sign? Can you go ahead?
Yeah, but why do you tell them, my building, I require, we send home, I'd rather we send home a God-ruined birthday school. And we ask them to write, we make it almost like a home, right? Not applicable or fill it out. And if there's more kids in your classroom, you need to return, one goes, rest of the class. And they still, send it back, back link, right? If they don't want to fill it out, they're not going to fill it out. Even if we require it to come back, they would rather write non-applicable than to fill it out.
And the ones that we were getting, they're not eligible. So we're doing, putting them through the system and they're not eligible.
But you did get some, Sean. You did get some. I mean, we're up since five years ago. We're up by 1% a year, so seven years from now, we'll be up to 32.
What we can analyze too, is you, let's say you weren't eligible, but all of a sudden you were out of medical. Like something happened to you and you can't provide for your family, and you teachers who probably hear sometimes the students say that, let them know, go get free and reduced application. Because they can get temporary free and reduced because they're, they had a job because it was a work company.
Yep, or call Sean.
Yeah.
She's happy to make a phone call.
You know, I'm calling the family. Families don't know that. I mean, you do put that information out, but they don't think about it, you know? So, and we've had that happen.
Is there, okay, is, again, people, people react to bullets, okay? In the form of, did you know? Right? Did you know if you qualify for this, you get this one right, did you know if you qualify for this, you get, your district would get tax breaks? Did you know, you know, all of these things? I'm just not, again, I don't know what was on there. I'm sure, Sean, you've done outstanding job, and people are probably too proud to fill out some of those things. I understand that. But from, from a, again, a district-wide, do they understand, are they getting this that they're...
So it's less personal? So it's less personal, is what you're saying?
Not personal. I understand the idea of going in there and plugging in your number, which is very impersonal. Nobody even knows who gets the free and reduced, they don't. Because it's a...
It's a lot better than it used to be.
Right. But are people aware of the implications affecting their taxes? Okay? And their neighbors' taxes, and their parents' taxes, and their grandparents' taxes who live in the district? I'm not sure that has been absorbed.
Okay. What else you got?
Um, we talked about electives and the desire to just provide a variety, more sections to eliminate the opportunities for those kids who are in two to three study halls.
Did you talk about a minimum number of students in a class to run an elective?
We've talked about every year, too many. Some of them?
Some have too many?
There was a conversation about feeling like too many.
So there's not enough sections is what, right? Especially like in yours where it's more hands-on. Do you have a feeling on how many is too few to run an elective?
I don't really have that situation, but...
But some do. Okay.
You can talk a little bit, like looking at past, ahead, of like what courses, like Jeff said, you know, sometimes it's, you know, people are asking for this and some years they're not.
Right.
Or the way the scheduling falls.
Yes.
15 kids asked for this class.
Yes, but only three can get in.
It goes up scheduling.
Absolutely. And the smaller we get, the more complicated that becomes, right?
And at the same time, you've got AP courses, we're having 31 in there. I mean, so the general AP pool is they have 17, what?
It's a guideline, it's not a rule.
I just spoke sadly about that.
Okay.
But just the idea that they say that that's the best formula.
The less staff we have, the less message we have.
Yes, absolutely.
But I think that this is something that we could also say, which we realize, you realize that for years, we've never gone above the 2%. We haven't even come close to 2% in some cases, you said. We're trying to get back.
Since I've been here.
We're trying to get back.
So in 2013, the board at the time, which was not this board, I don't think there's any, there's no one here that was on, because it was March of 2013, the decision was to go out at 199.
We remarked about that.
Yeah. What were, the tax cap, the tax levy cap was 299. But the board at the time was concerned that that would be a confusion to people and that they would vote no because it was over that nebulous 2%, right? Anything else?
Well, looking at all of this, one point I made, like we're talking about a tax cap, we're talking about getting these parents a free and reduced lunch applications, but the fact remains that the state fulfilled their obligation. We wouldn't be talking about any of this. If the state was giving us a 50%, we wouldn't, I don't think we wouldn't care. The tax cap wouldn't be that big if you don't.
So take a look at all the schools south of us. They all get more than 50%. Okay, they actually have, they, Salamanca has no conversations like this. Okay? None. Those who have the reservation on their property, on their tax rolls. So when the state can do the 50%, when the free and reduced lunch rate is up high, when there's a tax base, when there's all those things, you don't have six months of conversation. You just don't.
But for us, I think we had that 50%. A 10% increase in our budget from the state would be huge.
What's it worth in dollars?
We wouldn't be worried about...
50% might be 15 million.
So 15% is 15 million. And what do we get now?
We get 11.8.
And we get 11.8, which is versus 15 million. Can you imagine that? That's 3.2 million.
That's the money we used to have.
Yeah? Right? Absolutely.
I mean, we...
And there's your legislative advocacy.
That is, that is the day when we used to, the school used to buy uniforms that we used to use there.
Yeah, you guys know that, right?
That I didn't have to pay...
That our kids fundraised for their uniforms for athletics, right?
To Mrs. Felton's point, is there a way that we could create a form, a generic form online to, for parents to write letters to our legislators?
Jen, you want to talk?
They've been up there in the past. They've been out at meetings.
Karen can talk too. They've done a lot with music and arts boosters.
Boosters did a ton with petitions and developing generic letters.
At every concert.
At, I just attended Legislature 118, there was a legislature meeting, Erie County Association of School Boards, where they said their primary focus for advocacy right now is that they demand a partnership with our legislative representatives, and they want 50% of our budget to be funded by the state for every school district. So Karen, I think she might have already drafted a letter. It's very simple, it's very concrete. I would be more than happy to work with her and forward that to you guys, and put it out to your union membership, and put it... I don't, see, it gets tricky with posting it on the website. So I think it takes a while for boosters and things like that.
What about tweeting at them?
What about what?
Their Twitter handles.
I could Twitter.
Well, what I'm saying is, every legislator's Twitter, we should have access to, we should just have...
So I'll tell you one thing that could be really helpful right now is, and I can, I can put the link up here, but you can also Google it, is to take a look at New York State's safety package that was passed by the Senate yesterday. Because that school resource officer is a teacher to us. Okay? That's what this means. So in terms of safety, we will give up a teacher to get the school resource officer. If a grant came through, because the House passed this and it went through, and we have a grant, now we don't have to do that. Right now, our bullet aid from Senator Galavan goes for ag in the classroom and to pay for half of our technology teacher, which is why technology goes up, but some of the other elective areas don't, because we get a grant for Senator Galavan. If he switches that to school resource officer, then our electors in technology and our ag in the classroom go down. So that's probably the easiest thing for you to do. And to then write to, now, Galavan is Senator for us, they've already passed it. Di Pietro's, his house is not. Reach out to Di Pietro and say, hey, we really like this bill. This is a smart bill. We need the House to pass it so that we at Eden can get a grant for some of these safety things for mental health counselors, psychologists, school resource officers, and not have it come out of our general budget.
I do want to go back to Robert's question though about letter writing and like there. The contact information for Galavan and Di Pietro are already on the website. We can absolutely add their Twitter handles, I don't really get to work, but we could add their Twitter handles on, handles on there so people can access it quickly. There was a lot of conversation in the past about whether or not we can post a generic letter or what. I don't know if our thought has changed on that one, because we have in the past.
I've seen some districts be really aggressive towards it.
Have we been able to see one on the website?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
So I'll reach out to Karen and see what she has, so that we're kind of all doing the same today, and the message we can definitely add to it. But Erie County Association of School Boards, their push, it's a collective push. They're looking for all school districts to say the same thing, which is, we want 50% of our budget funded by the state, period. It's a simple message. That's what we need to function. Can I sit? Action, Senator, just push one up. We can all push it up.
Excellent, Linda. Thank you.
It's very easy. You just hit the button, and a lot of our members aren't connected to that.
Sweet.
Whether you like Twitter or not, it makes everyone suddenly have a bully pulpit. And it just, there's just something about it. There is, there is negativity for sure, and what there is, it matters just pushing like and retweet, and retweet, and it just gains steam.
Well, if we come up with a hashtag, too.
Di Pietro's coming Saturday to the library?
Yeah.
Di Pietro's...
2:00, High School Library.
Um, but we can also push it out through Facebook.
Yeah.
If they use, I mean, I'm old school.
We'd, you'd have, we don't have a Facebook, Jen, but it could go, we don't have a Facebook account.
We'll definitely put their Twitter and Facebook information up there, so it's an easy way. I mean, I think they're both on board, but I think they need to see...
I mean, we, I could probably go there, and I'm sure there's already people who are doing this, and I could just like and re-like or whatever.
Right.
But I just...
But I think getting the word out bluntly, too, to, to your members, letting them know, this is the hashtag we're using, this is how we're pushing. I can definitely put it out on our personal Facebook page to, you know, the parents that are friends with, like...
And then any other schools that are on...
I'm just saying. If somebody's telling on something, they will...
Right.
Somebody else can put that. I don't want to get, like, wasted on you. But yeah, I think that's a great idea. I hope. I'll definitely...